We'll call the meeting to order and begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, roll call.
Hockler.
Here.
Graylow.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Easy.
Here.
Hammond's here.
All right, are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Right, hearing none, is there, are there any additions to the agenda?
Move to approve, second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And hopefully everyone's had a chance to read the minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve, second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right, motion carries. Visitors should be heard. Any, any visitors would like to speak? To anything that's not on the agenda? Okay. Ina. The equalization report.
Good morning, I sent out. I don't know. So I guess I'm just open for any questions. By state statute says I have to meet with you today. So. But if anybody has any questions, I think I pretty much went over everything that we've occurred this year, so. Not quite sure how we're going to set up for next, the consolidated board next week. Because we'll have, that's next Wednesday afternoon, because we'll have four more people for the consolidated board. I was looking, I wondered, that would be confusing to have the city there, then they wouldn't really see the speaker. And then.
I think we just move some chairs up here and probably squeeze in.
Yeah.
Squeeze in.
Right now, there's not much for the consolidated board.
We could add another table on, on that end maybe.
And move the podium or have them speak from that table.
Right, yeah.
Okay. And move the podium clear back.
Something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I just wanted.
We'll make it work.
Yeah, I think adding a table is probably the best bit.
Okay, and then on school, I don't know what the new person, whether the new person will be a director or whether we'll be, they will be hiring an office staff person. So if the office, if the, the person that's hired is not certified, they will be going to school and can't remember the date, but it's not the same time as Kyle and Lina will be going. So. But, otherwise, and I'm hoping, I know that I'm done June 30th, but I would still like to go to conference the last time, and that's the middle of June, I believe. So. It's in my budget for, for me to go, but I guess I would just kind of like you guys to tell me it's okay.
Well. I'm comfortable with it, I think that, you know, I think that you can still bring back some interesting information, but I think also you would have a lot to contribute to a conference with your, any years of service, so, you know.
You're still the director at that point.
All right, so, okay. Unless you have any questions, I'm done.
Looks, it looks good.
Okay.
You know, it's.
All right.
I'd say when you go to, to conference, take good notes so that you can help along the new person with whatever new is coming along at that point.
Yeah. So. And I don't know where that stands, so.
Yeah.
I think they're getting ready to do some phone interviews. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's see, Scott. We're doing the bid openings, and I guess what we'll do is, we've got two, two bids for MEP upgrades. First one is from Electric Construction Company.
Well, early, aren't they?
Oh, are we?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
We can do Rod though.
Can rearrange the schedule a little bit here.
Let's, let's do that, thank you for noticing that. Rod, the oh well, we've got the micro, micro servicing project bid award. So I guess that's something we can, we can talk about now.
Is Brad on?
I don't see Brad on yet.
Okay, well then let's start with, oh dear, Highway Materials Bid Awards. Why don't we start with diesel quotes?
Well, we can do the material award, you've got everything in front of you, I believe.
Okay.
I printed off her. The first sheet was the culvert on it from last year's Two North bid also handed them out this morning and you can see some of them went up like around a dollar a foot, some of the bigger pipe actually went down a little bit, not very many of them, but a few did, the forty eight inch and and the seventy two inch, which helped out a little, but so they're still pretty close to what we accepted last year, so that little packet that I give you from Two North includes a lot of things. So I never went through and picked them all out, I figured, you know, if you got any questions, you can look through and see what's there, but I recommend that you award the Beetle County actually already awarded that from Two North and all the paperwork's in the back of it. And plus my material, do you guys all get the packets for our normal material things? So, you know, I recommend that you award the ones that I've picked, if you got any questions, fire away.
Yeah, the, the one question I had was, uh, see, you talk about, uh, some of those awards are to all bidders? Is that? Yeah. So on asphalt concrete, recommend awarding to all bidders.
Yes, we've, we've done that in the past, because if we happen to be up in the northeast corner of the county up around Beersford, it's way quicker to run to Sioux Falls, utilize Knife River and Marone Roy's instead of awarding Knife River in Yankton, and then I have to drive all the way down there and like same thing if we're in Burbank, it's quicker just to run to Sioux City and that's the way, that's the way I've done it all the time, but I mean, if there's something that different, I can change it too, but what I always put in are most advantageous at the time, because sometimes when you're up by Beersford, it's a lot quicker just to run to Sioux Falls even if you you know, because they're pretty much on the edge of town, so instead of having to cut across all the county roads to get onto Yankton, so that's why I did it that way.
So.
Pretty, they're pretty close to the same. You know, until you get to like Barclay. You know, depends on what we're getting, like Marone Roy's and Sioux Falls and Barclay, there's three dollars a ton difference there.
It looks like seven dollars a ton for.
Well, it just depends on what you're, what we're getting. We have two different kinds of.
Yep, G two is, is three dollars.
So the Knife River and Sioux Falls for what we usually get, both of those will work. Back when diesel fuel was pretty high, then it didn't pay to do that, but now we, the time wise is where we make up the difference, so. Unless you it, unless you want to do otherwise, I'm fine with that too, but that's the way I've done it in the past and some of these we might not even get to. And there's sometimes, do the plants are broke down? Then you gotta go wherever you can get it or shut down for the day and try to figure something else, so.
Yep, yep.
That, that can happen pretty often, you know.
Yes, it does, unfortunately.
Yeah, yeah, I've been on that path before, and the part of that travel time too, keeping the travel time down is good, because then you don't end up with the the mixed cooling in the truck while you're transporting it, you end up with a crust on the top, which is not good. And so not only do we save time, but we probably have a little better product once it gets in the, in the mat.
All right. Other, other questions about materials bids?
Move to approve the superintendent's recommendations.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion, motion carries.
Ashley was thinking Brad was coming to the meeting.
Um.
He can do diesel quotes.
Diesel quotes?
Move to approve Jerry's low bid.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Jerry's low bid. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then you wanted to talk about the big program awards.
Yeah, so last Thursday, Clay County was awarded those two structures for rehab that we're having trouble with. The state said they weren't a good enough shape. Brad and I talked to Cody from the DOT and the bridge guy, and we weren't in agreement with the last bridge report we got from Johnson's. So we sat down and talked with him, he agreed with us, so we put him in the deal, uh, and we got awarded them both, which surprised me, and so that's an eighty twenty match. So the first bridge there on the list is on the Volin Road West of Ron Yat's. If you're familiar with that, and right now the total, they figure is nine hundred and three thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. So our twenty percent would be a hundred and eighty thousand seventy seven sixty six. And then the other bridge on the list is on University Road right south of, um, oh, the new Pioneer Building. I can't think of the guy who built the new house.
Earl and Olson.
Earl and Olson, yeah, right, just south of his. So that one gets, uh, two of the, there are two different process, if I remember right. The first bridge, they actually take the whole deck off, do the rebar, fix the rebar, repaint everything, and they put a low slump deck on it. That's more labor intensive. The one on the University Road is what we did on the Dakota Street Bridge. They fixed the bad spots, take out oh, there's a word for it, I can't think of the delamination, so they take all that out, then they put a epoxy chip seal on top of it. And that, that one, right now, the total, and these are all estimates, is five hundred and thirty nine thousand seven hundred and twelve. And so our share is a hundred and seven thousand nine forty two, so did not have that in my budget, we didn't think we're going to get under. But we'll go back to the paving and asphalt patch and paving, we won't have to do as much, our roads held up pretty good through the frost and the winter and everything, so we're sitting pretty good where I'm pretty sure we can cut way back on that to cover this. I didn't want to wait till next year because price is going to go up. And we actually got, first time we put anything on it, and we got it. So I wanted to keep it in line, unless you guys don't approve of the not doing quite as much patching. You know, like I said, the roads held up pretty good, so surprisingly.
Yeah.
But that's kind of all I got on on that, so.
So that bridge right west of Ron's, the trees are starting to pile up against it in the river.
Oh, yeah, I bet the rivers come up three and a half feet since last Thursday.
Yep.
Maybe more, I don't have my notes. So, yep.
Just letting you know.
Yeah, I haven't been to that bridge, I was sick yesterday, so. But it's about due to come out up there on three hundred street. I'm sure, way it's coming up is that it's going to go out up there, hopefully not everywhere else, but them guys up north just keep getting low, but if we get rid of this before it starts really melting up there, we we're looking pretty good, right?
Yep. And then the bridge north of Mackling.
Okay.
Over the creek, what did, have they decided, well, you've got anything with that one yet?
Pretty much gonna, yeah, there won't be the load limit on it, he he inspected just the plants, he hasn't been able to get under the bridge itself yet. And of course, when he had a chance, it was blown full of snow, now it's got water in it, but, yeah. So he told me to hold off on that, because Ron Yat's bridge was another one that he suggested we put load limit on too. I, that I'm a non-engineer, but I know enough to know that he did the inspections wrong. So, and DOT, if Brad agreed, so they got those on hold till he get that one inspected. I don't remember what he said for load limit on that now, like thirty five ton or something.
Yeah, something like that.
So, yeah, that one kind of surprised me when he said that, but.
And then load limits? What are they, what are you thinking about taking them off?
Well, we were thinking about in the morning, if not Thursday. So everything.
Depending on the weather.
Everything, yeah. Yeah, I was sprinkling when I come in, but I don't know, I don't think we're supposed to get a whole lot.
No.
Yeah, we're right on the edge, we're right on the edge.
Yeah, so I think Union County is taking theirs off tomorrow too, maybe, not positive. But I know we ate in the county's holding off for another week, but we haven't seen any bleeding, so to speak, so I think we're in good shape. They did start, well, they haven't started the core samples on the Volin Oil, but Adam from Old Egg had it all lined up, so whenever they start, they're going to let me know. But they were kind of waiting, because the Volin Oil road from the East County line was still bleeding, so they wanted to let everything settle down before they start doing their samples.
Well, sounds good, I, I think the, the idea of transferring to repair those two bridges is the right thing to do too, from my point of view, do we need a motion on that, or?
No, I thi- I think we already.
Think we're okay?
Approved the grants.
You already got the money in my budget of just.
Just transfer, yeah.
It's still under the supplies and materials.
Yeah.
You know, it's still under the.
Same, same budgeting line, yeah. One thing I noticed when I was down the airport road, uh, there is the south side of the approach on, uh, the bridge there settled quite a long time ago, and I saw you, I saw you patched it.
Yeah, just temporary, until we get down there with some asphalt, we put some old mix in there, because I had a one morning knocked everything off my dash, I can't believe, I couldn't believe it settled that much.
I did too.
Every, every culvert this year that usually in the frost cycle heaves, and you have a bump. This year they all sunk.
Yeah.
I think it's just because it's so dry under there. I mean, we got weight, culvers I never, I mean, I know they're there, but you never feel are just terrible, we run out of bump signs. But yeah, that one gets a lot of traffic and beat from the city, mentioned that to me one day too, and kind of forgot it till I hit it.
Yeah.
So, but that, that did get fixed.
It, yeah, that one settled a lot, I was, you know, I didn't go back and get out of the truck and look at it.
What was it? Five years ago, my notes. We had that all dug out and quickly put it back in, and it sunk like that over a weekend. So the contractor had to dig it all back out and my, we had some dry material and it was harder to rocketer, I can't believe it. Of course, two inches coming to a concrete slab, that's pretty good pump on your tires, so.
All right.
But yeah, that's acceptable, the micro servicing. Thinking, I, I don't know. I don't know the true numbers, he hasn't said anything, that anything changed, so I better wait till.
Yeah.
But the company that did have the lowest bid, they bid us every year that we've did micro servicing, this is the first time they've ever come in cheapest. I believe they've been around just as long or longer than the company we've been getting, so. I'm surprised, and so we all have it broke down too. You know, I wasn't too happy about that, was together almost give me a heart attack when I think our numbers for the miles we had is under a million. So Yankton County has the biggest, I believe, I haven't got anything official, so.
That's what it looks like in the spreadsheets we got.
Oh, did you guys get?
Yeah, we got the spreadsheets.
I probably did, I didn't see them, I guess. But I just talked to the Yankton County guy and he told me that not to panic, our numbers were right under a million or somewhere, so.
Yeah, theirs were.
This was like nine eighty five.
Expected.
And it could be less than that if we decide not to do anything on the Volin Road, and just to make sure you know, because I told you wrong, we already micro service from Up City to nineteen, but we're still going to do the quarter sample. Because if the trucks start running that, micro service is just cosmetic. I mean, it adds wear to the road, but kind of gets us back into right shape and builds in the wheel run, so.
Yeah, it, it adds, it adds, uh, wear.
Yeah.
Wear loss, not necessarily strength.
Unfortunately, I didn't know that before we chip sealed that. Because if I'll know I was been chip sealed, Up City to the West County line now. So. That's all I have till Brad. Hope he didn't forget.
I guess we can cancel outstanding checks, if it's another thing.
Oh, that's a good idea, okay, so, um, let's, uh, let's then go to, uh, resolution twenty twenty three dash oh six for the cancellation of outstanding checks. So it's a pretty, pretty simple.
So for the, um, the two new board members, we go through a process every so often where if we have sent out checks and they haven't been cashed in a certain amount of time, we'll send a letter out to the person, um, they have the opportunity to get a replacement check. For example, if it was lost in the mail or if they just misplaced it, um, if they don't respond within a certain amount of time, then we just go ahead and cancel those checks.
And the amount is relatively small, four hundred and sixty three dollars and nineteen cents.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash oh six.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
It looks like Brad might be on now.
Yep. Right, we've only got about three minutes. Bit out.
Shouldn't take too long.
No, shouldn't. Brad, you on there?
I am, can you hear me now?
Yep.
So we're a little ahead of schedule.
Oh, okay, sorry, guys.
So you want to tell them to micro serve?
Yeah, so, so, um, um, what you have is, and we were in that nine hundred thousand, I'm about, I'm in the car right now, so I can't, uh, grab it, but, um, and I sent in a notice to award, so I recommend awarding.
So I don't know if you were cut off, but you recommend awarding.
Yeah, yeah, I recommend awarding, it's, it's a, it's a different contractor than before, it's Missouri Petroleum, but you know, there's, there's like four of them that are in the business, so I'm not you know, they're, they're a long-term contractor, and so I'm not worried about them either.
Yeah, I was curious why you didn't recommend, um, engineers, which was what about?
That's, oh, that's my, that's my cost.
Oh, those are your estimate, okay.
Yeah. We'd love to.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
I couldn't figure that one out.
Yeah, so it was.
The fire.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it was a little above my estimate, but, um, you know, that's me sitting at my desk trying to guess what contractors will bid.
All right, all right, I was trying to figure that out. It wasn't making much sense to me, but now I get it.
Okay.
So Brad, we can just make that motion to accept Missouri Petroleum?
Yeah, and then if Carrie, there's a form too that I sent to Carrie, have you just scanned that back to me and I'll take it from there.
So I'll move to accept Missouri Petroleum's bid.
Second that.
Hey, there's a motion and a second, um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all the, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Dunn Highway Materials bid.
I, I, I'm going to sign off if you don't have anything for me, um.
I think that's good.
Okay, all right, talk to you guys later.
All right.
Thanks, Brad. I, I have one question. How do you? What do we have to do to not really change in ordinance, but get it updated? Without cutting trees, and we've had a couple people stopping, hey, why are you cutting our trees? Because they're hanging over, what gives you the right, and so we have one that Dale Peterson signed, which was nineteen seventy one, and one Gary Iverson signed in nineteen ninety six. The one in nineteen ninety six is a lot more detailed, but is that something that I have to send to you, or do I send it to Alexis first to see, and then I think the it's an ordinance, not a resolution, so is that different?
Yeah, I would probably send the language that you're looking for to the state's attorney, and once they're okay with it, then we would have to have a first reading and second reading for these guys to change it.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd have to advertise.
Explains the one codified law, and you know, it's hanging out over the road, and nobody's given much grief, because they've asked them a couple of questions. And that's the only, they had to, uh, Dale Peterson's one person, that's the only copy lyric you could find, and so I looked a little deeper and I go, here, at least send this one to them, it's pretty close, but it is pretty old, I guess, so, and I don't know, I don't think anything's changed in that in that law, so. But, yeah, I'll send it to Alexis, that's got to keep her busy, don't you?
Well, she's watching you.
Oh, she back you.
Yeah.
I can't feel that, I'm in the back of your neck.
This time.
Doing this thing at you.
Court date today or something, I thought. Anything else for me?
That's it, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't see. Dennis Ganshow here.
Well, not achieve nine thirty, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We didn't waste a minute of it.
That's right.
All right, so we can do the MEP project bid openings. And there are two of them. We've got um Builders Company from Sioux City. Looks like um. The sum bid bait, uh, some base bid for general civil structural, mechanical and electrical construction is five million dollars. And there is a bid bond included in that.
I do have, I believe, a bit adjustment from them. Okay. And it is a deduction of two million three hundred eleven thousand.
What was the deduct number?
Two million three hundred eleven thousand.
Right, so that brings us to two.
Six eight nine, is that sound right?
Two million six eighty-nine.
All right. And the second one. Is from Electric Construction Company. And. Yours is two million seven hundred eight thousand. All right. Scott, do you want to take a look at these and give us a recommendation?
What's in the budget for this? One point three?
Oh, no, two.
In the building fund?
I believe we have about two point seven in there.
So it's gonna be close.
Yeah. It's two point seven. Does that? That's just for this particular project or is that also a grant?
No, that's just, just for this project, so. The, like the courtroom or the court security project is already, our portion of that is.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's what's, yeah.
Okay, just making sure that.
All right, so we're in the ballpark.
Apples, yeah.
We're in the ballpark. That's good.
Thank you.
And looks like we're. Let's see, Dennis is in here, but Andy, you're here. Would you like to? Talk about patrol cars?
I had a two issues I was gonna bring up to you. One is a little, little history in the last year for Jeff and Dave. And reminding the rest of you about what we went through. You recall last year, we were gonna replace one patrol car. Um, we had a bid from Vermillion Ford to provide that patrol car. And then we're scheduled to replace two this year. And then last year, what happens, Vermillion Ford was forced to cancel that contract because Ford refused to deliver them the car. And we let them out of their contract. At that time, I reached out and they also said they weren't able to bid for the two cars this year. I reached out to Wagner Auto in Pier and um, and was able to order the cars there and uh. The, so we ordered three cars and, and then um. But I had, I needed a car. And so then what I did last fall then is I was able to find a surplus police car down in Nebraska. Federal surplus property and bought that at a pretty good price, about, you know, half of what a new one would cost. And we've got that car on the road now and it's fine. And um, I think it's a twenty seventeen. And at that time, I remember Phyllis was the one that suggested it and it was a consensus of the board that we continue to just seek the three cars. That for this year, because we really didn't know what was gonna happen with the contracts. So I, I spoke to Wagner Auto recently and they said that they think the first two cars will be shipped. This was a couple of weeks ago. Will be shipped in a month, they said. So hopefully, we're gonna see those cars, because even when I ordered them for Wagner Auto, they said, sure hope they don't cancel this order. And so um, that's why we kept the, kept it at three. So my question now is if the, if I can get the two cars, great. Do we need the third car? Should I cancel that? Because I don't have the money for three cars in this year's budget. We, we turned back money last year. We only spent a fraction of what we, what we had budgeted last year on the used car. So I I'm comfortable with just seeking the two cars this year and getting back on, you know, on our rotation. Uh, if you recall, we do uh, two, two cars one year, one car the next year and we budget for a car and a half each year. And um. So I, I'm just looking for your wishes on it, or if you want to continue to, yeah, I would, I would need a supplement to buy that extra car. And um, about forty-five thousand dollars is what I'd need to buy that third car and then just get rid of another car earlier. Or I just. Get the two, replace the old cars this year and, and then get back on track next year.
My question is. You, are you, are you, are you fitting within your miles and your expectations? Do you have anything that's you feel is a little? You know, gone past that?
No, uh, I think that the car that we bought last year that's used is not. Our newest or our oldest car. It's gonna land right in the middle. We do have one that would be, if I replace three cars this year, I would probably replace a twenty seventeen. That's the same year as the used one we bought, but it has a lot more miles on it. But it's a good car. It's still functioning. The only concern is the number of miles on it. And uh, but it's still operating just fine. It'll be the one that goes out in, in twenty twenty-four. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be that one. Um, so I'm not uncomfortable uh, just going after the two cars this year. You know, and save the forty-five thousand dollars that I would need to be supplemented. I know you have other things. To address, so. But I, you know, it it kind of, I was almost happy to hear him say, well, the first two cars will come, so we get the two. And then cancel the third, so if that's what you want to do, but as, as we sit here right now, we've got three cars ordered. And, and um, you know, I have a purchase agreement for three cars that I sent them. A purchase order for three cars, so I don't think they'll be heartbroken if we cancel it, but. If there's a problem, I'd sure come back to you.
Yeah. Can you change the three orders to deliver you next year for one?
Not without thought. Of course, that would be a twenty twenty-three. Is that what we ordered? Was it twenty, twenty twenty-three? So these, these are Dodge Drangles from Pierce.
I would just try and get the two and not cancel the third one. It might be September before you get it anyway.
It might, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll worry about. Because it's the, the twenty twenty-four is gonna be more expensive.
Oh, yeah.
So.
And that twenty twenty-three is still gonna have zero miles on it.
Sure.
I can do that. Now, it might come in two weeks.
Yeah. Well, we'll worry about that then.
Yeah.
But even, even if they say it's gonna be shipped in a month.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean ship well.
And shipping can take a month or better, so.
What's the repercussions if we say, wow, you know, it's here, somebody else probably got a order out there?
Well, we were on standby for one that he thought, this is last ball that he thought would be canceled. The, the agency that ordered it did take it, but he thought they might not, so we were next in line for that one, so I'm sure they have buyers. So if you'd like, I can wait till the time comes and come back, talk to you again. I just don't want to take delivery of three cars without talking to you first, because I don't have enough money for three cars.
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me.
Okay. All right, we'll revisit that. I'll take the two and I'll talk to you before I go pick up the third car. Just kind of help remind me about how many miles do we put on for a car per year? Uh, per car, about thirty thousand per car per year. And we try to even that out. What happened with that one twenty seventeen was the year that was the brand new car. Uh, there was an old, older car that was a jalopy. And um, it wasn't on the road a lot for a good part of the last year or two. It was, it was in service and. The go-to car was the brand new car.
Yeah.
And so the, for, for getting double duty and so it ended up getting a couple of years mileage uh, any, for each of two years, so. Really, that's not all that many miles per year, you know. No, not terribly. Uh, if they ran, you know, three shifts a day. They, we'd be rotating model a lot sooner, but we're running them. Well, the problem is we started running them uh, to where we had enough cars. We're running them eight years. And regardless of miles, they just, at eight years, they were just too beat up.
Yeah.
That's why we started this uh, you know, running them, you know, six years. By, by replacing uh, two cars one year, one car the next year. Yeah. And then I'm looking at things like, you know, the van, the van, of course, falls into that rotation and uh, we know our use of the van will diminish. When the new jail's built, it will still need it, but it'll be cross-town work. And uh, so we've actually talked about keeping one of these cars that's to go out since the, we don't have a contract, doesn't involve a trade-in like when we do it locally. So we'll have two cars to surplus. And uh, one of them, I, I suggested maybe we would unmark it and use it for transports when we're only transporting one or two people. And save the wear and tear on that van. And then, then get rid of this car when we build a new jail, then issue, so. Uh, you know, I'll talk to you about that, because we'll, we'll need to declare those surplus anyway, so I'll take action, you folks, if we decide you want to keep it or not. We're considering that and extend the life of that van. It's, it's one of our older vehicles now, but it's a twenty fifteen, so. But I think we can keep that thing on the road for a while, with what we're doing with it. Gets a lot of miles now, but. I think I can reduce that by keeping one of these old patrol cars, since it's got the equipment in it and they make these, the, the equipment unique to the. Year and model of the car now. They know what they're doing. You can't just move it from car to car like we used to do. And uh, so the equipment in it's. You're not, not gonna do any good, but it would if we keep using it for prisoner transports. And the prison transport too, that's uh, those are more road miles. You're all, all road miles. Just back forth to point. Yeah. But when we run down to point and pick up a prisoner and drive him to Vermillion to go to the dentist and then take him back to out point. Or if we're just taking one, we don't need that van.
Yeah.
And, and uh, you know, I don't know that the mileage is all that much different, but it's wear and tear and we want to extend the life of the vans. We're not. Buying a brand new van in a year or two. To, to just driving back forth across town. We keep it off the highway. I won't worry so much about it.
All right.
Okay, so I'll talk to you again when that car comes in. The other thing I was gonna talk about was a part-time jail staff. Um, I have the opportunity to. Hire two former law enforcement officers to come and do prisoner transports in court, things like that. And what, what happens is um, when we have additional needs for staff. For mainly for court, when we have eight or more inmates that we might go to out point, bring them back. Uh, sometimes those inmates might be in Yankton and we're, we're going two different directions to pick people up. And then uh, then we, it takes a lot of staff to, to manage court and then we have to take them back later that day. And so what we tend to do is call in part-time jailers. And uh, part-time jailers are great for that, but the problem is the nature of our part-time jailers, that they're typically college students. They have class during the day. They're good, you know, in the evenings and weekends. It's a great college job. But they're not as available to us during the day shift, so I've got a couple of people that would do that for us. Um, and so I just like to add additional staff. I'm not asking for any money, because these are hours, you know, so many hours in a day. These are hours that would be worked by somebody. Um, but I just want to add jailers. Now, you could say, well, hire those as part-time jailers. Those guys aren't gonna work the nights and weekends. And so uh, it would be uh, just a couple additional people on my roster. Um, it wouldn't cost us any more money unless there's, you know, insurance costs of. You know. Unemployment or any, anything like that, that it costs the county to have additional employees on, on the roster. So the, really, what you've got a roster increase, but really no real FTE, no increase. No. We wouldn't call them in when we wouldn't have called in somebody else.
Right.
Well, possibly, there's times we've tried to call in somebody else and there isn't anybody to call. They're not available, so we just. Either bring in deputies or full-time jailers on overtime, which does cost more, or we just get through with what we have.
As far as like insurance costs, it would be really, really minimal, probably. Less than a hundred dollars a year for workers come, so. Minimal.
You know, one of them is a retired police officer. One of them is one of our reserved deputies who's ready to not be a reserved deputy anymore, but he wants to help. And he wants to do something like this and uh. And uh, you know, he would, right now, he's volunteer, so we get him for free, so like, you know. Uh, we'd lose that, but he does, he won't have the training obligations, requirements to keep his law enforcement certification up and that's what he's ready to get away from. So it would be a seamless thing. These guys could start tomorrow and do the job. And I would just start them at the entry level jailer position.
Sounds like a good move to me.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me.
Right, I will go ahead and do that and just add them on, so. That their information carries paid employees instead of. Well, one of them's would be new to us, but he's, he's not new. You know, he'll do the, he'll do the job tomorrow, just like he worked here for all these years. That's all I had. Get a for me then or?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
All right, Dennis. You're up for a update on grants and.
Um, I posted a job for seasonal help. I've got two hired. Uh, I still would like to find one more. Where hopefully somebody decent will apply. Uh, I only had three apply in the first place and the one. Application didn't look very good. I didn't even interview. As far as that grant that I had applied for, we were awarded the grant for twenty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars. This is. The first year of a plan, three-year project. And we'll, we'll have to reapply every year, but this is for working on Missouri River from uh. Union County all the way through Charles Mix County. We had a meeting the other day of the lead supervisors. I called it and uh. Not surprisingly to me, Bon Home didn't show up. So Bon Home is probably, unless they put some effort into it, they're not gonna get nothing, anything out of them. But we kind of decided we're gonna start like about around the Pixtown Dam. We're gonna start scouting. And then come back and spray with the boat what we can, with ATVs we can, when the drone will mark out places we need to drone. Uh, and the reason we're starting there is because the weeds are coming this way, so we just will try to stop them there first. And go as far as we can. We're out of money or out of time, wanting to. I guess that's the plan. As far as the scouting, probably I will be in the boat for most of that. Uh, with somebody from that other county. Or maybe one other person. As far as when we get to spraying, we're gonna, we're getting maps made. We'll mark out where they need to spray. And uh, I'm gonna have my assistant running the boat for that, because the grant will reimburse for his wages, not mine. I gotta do a little more training with him on driving the boat, but you'll get there. And. Worth thinking, okay, we're out in Charles Mix County. We're putting in a, a long day. It might be feasible to get a motel room rather than drive all the way back here and, you know, go back. I put in some travel expense in the grant and for fifteen hundred dollars. And I'm gonna make sure that that will cover the motel rooms and, and the gas. So. And possibly we could be putting in longer days, you know, by time to get set up and get out there, you won't want to quit right away. But we can work out either the, you know, odds are we're not gonna get a full week of work and the weather just won't be. Good for it, so whether we leave earlier on a, another day or whatever, but if that sounds good with you guys. Other than that, I guess, I don't have anything else.
Does Bonham have a weed supervisor?
Yeah.
What does he do?
Don't know.
And there's no way we can force them to?
Nope.
Since we're dealing with.
You know, years ago, Brenda Severs and I went to a Bon Home County Commissioner meeting to try to get them on board with this. And um basically what they said is, well, we really appreciate what you're doing, but we're not gonna do it. So I kinda just give up, I mean, what else can you do? Unfortunate for us, it's not a good deal for us either, but.
Right.
I don't know what else we can do about it. Like I contacted, uh when I called the meeting, I emailed everybody, all the supervisors and. Everybody was there except for Bon Home County, I never heard a word from them, and when we were writing a grant. Uh, we were debating whether to even include Bon Home County, but without it, it'd look bad if we're skipping one county. And I finally got hold of their weed supervisor and said they, they said, yes, we wanna be involved, well. We'll see what their involvement is.
In name only.
Yeah, yeah, and if they think we're gonna go out there and spray their weeds for them, they're wrong, this would just not gonna do it.
Think that'll do it, thanks so much.
Yep.
Looks good. Right, any building project updates?
I don't have any.
Joint jurisdiction discussion?
I saw their drill in this morning.
Yeah, I saw them.
Um, any executive session necessary? Sure. There are motion to go into executive session for personnel matters.
So moved.
Right, some motion and several seconds. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're in executive session.
You need a file to get out.
Move to come out of executive session.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, um any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.